We'll call this meeting of Lima City Council to order. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Councilor Townsend, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Just as a preface, after the events of the past week, I tried to think of something that would be, maybe we could, some of us, all of us could find comfort, and out of nowhere, the prayer of Saint Francis came. So while he didn't, is not known to have written it, he lived by these, by this prayer. And as we all know, we can only affect change within ourselves. So this is the prayer of Saint Francis of Assisi. "Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. And where there is sadness, joy. O divine master, grant that I may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned, and it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. Amen."
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Lowe.
Here.
Mr. Teppin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
Ms. Townsend.
And Mr. Nixon.
Here. There are no public hearings this evening. Privilege of the floor. We have three speakers. The first is Mr. David Adams. And I'll remind all speakers that the rules of council allow for three minutes under privilege of the floor. Would ask you to state your name and address for the record.
David Adams, 430 South Charles Street, Lima. Thank you very much for this privilege of the floor. I have actually two quick announcements, celebrations, I guess they would be, the first of which I will comment on. Ten years ago this month, the Allen County Commons Threads Project spun off, what's the right metaphor, spun off another project, an offspring, I guess would be the right word, the Public Officials Dialogue Project, which began in April of 2003. This Wednesday, April 24th, we will celebrate our 10th anniversary, 10 years of altercation-free public officials dialogue involving city, county, township, and village public officials, both elected and appointed. And I invite all members of city council and the city administration to attend our celebration this coming Wednesday, April 24th. It will be just down the street at the Chamber of Commerce Allen County Development Group Headquarters. It will begin at 12:00, it will end at 1:00. It will involve some celebratory comments and lunch, and some dialogue, just as we always do. So please put that on your calendar and attend if you can. We will be delighted to see you. The other celebration is of the month of April, which is National Poetry Month, which always seems to me to be my cue to come to city council. And the poem I've selected for a celebration of this National Poetry Month is arguably the most well-known, and I think a good contender for the very best, American poem by an American poet. And some of you will have guessed what that is, "The Road Not Taken" by Robert Frost. It's about choice, which is something all of us hold particularly close to our hearts as Americans, our freedom to choose between alternatives. "The Road Not Taken." "Two roads diverged in a yellow wood, and sorry I could not travel both and be one traveler. Long I stood and looked down one as far as I could till it bent in the undergrowth, then took the other as just as fair, and having perhaps the greater claim because it was grassy and wanted wear, but as for that, the passing there had worn them both about the same. Both that morning equally lay in leaves, no step had trodden black. I kept the other for another day, but knowing how way leads on to way, I doubted I should ever come back. I shall be telling this somewhere with a sigh ages and ages hence. Two roads diverged in a wood, and I, I took the one less traveled by, and that has made all the difference." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Next is Karen Bacon. You could state your name and address for the record.
Karen Bacon, 1128 State Street. Well, I am here this evening to address the safety on the Riverwalk, in particular the dog attacks that have not only occurred on the Riverwalk, but in the city of Lima as well. I passed out just some information because I know I'm only allotted the three or four minutes, so I just wanted to make sure I give you all of the information this evening so you can go back and review it. First, I want to say that there is a king corso that is located two blocks down from me on State Street. There has been 65 phone calls to the police since November of 2012 on this dog. The owner has three misdemeanor citations on the dog, and he owes approximately $1,500 to the city of Lima just in court fines, and some of that is on the dog and some of that is just in other charges. Now, this is just one example of an irresponsible dog owner here in the city of Lima. These large breeds require special care and special attention. They need to be socialized. They need to, they need to have proper exercise. And it's not the dog's fault when they attack. It's the owner's responsibility to make sure that they train and they care for these dogs properly. Now, I know that the city has ordinances against vicious dogs in place, but I just question how seriously they are being enforced, because to keep the Riverwalk safe and the city of Lima, these ordinances need to be taken seriously, because we cannot have another attack happen like what happened last week. That could have been a small child. If that was me outrunning on that path, which I do on a normal basis, I don't know if I would have survived that. And I, that's just terrible. So in addition to the current dog ordinances that are already in place, I listed some other regulations that I think really need to be, to be looked at. And first off, what I really think needs to happen is the, these large breeds, breeds or these vicious dog owners, and when I say vicious, I did pull up the vicious dog ordinance that the Lima City already has in place, and it just states that, that's any dog with a tendency to attack or bite someone. So, you know, after calling the police on this dog down the street from me, he had told me that would be considered a vicious dog, because it did have the tendency to bite. It's been let out, it's chased the mailman, things like that. So before any of these dog owners can even get a license or a dog tag, they have to show proof of liability, because another ordinance that I found is that there's $100,000 insurance liability that these owners need to be carrying. So if the dog owner is going into the dog warden to get the license or tag, or, you know, they should, they should have to prove that they have insurance on that dog, because again, that would help verify that's the correct owner, it's the correct address, just taking steps like that. Another ordinance, I know that a felon is not allowed to own one of these vicious dogs. However, I think that needs to be tightened up a little bit. If there is a dog owner out there that has court fines, that, you know, is just not abiding by the law, that should be investigated, should be looked at. And again, you know, I think the dog warden and the police, you know, they really need to kind of work together to look at, you know, is the cage up to code even after they get a license? Are they keeping the dog, you know, properly, you know, because some of these cages that I, especially on the dog that I've given you the example of, it just sits in a little cage on the side of the house. And, you know, and the police have told me, you know, it just keeps getting cited for that. And last but not least, I think three citations from the Lima City Police, and the dog should just be removed from the premises. There's no need for that owner to continually just be cited for the same thing over and over and over again, when that dog is just a nuisance to the neighborhood. It's just, it's neglect, it's mistreatment to the animal. So those are just some things there that I listed, you know, and I just really cannot stress enough that these ordinances really need to be put into place, just so, you know, we don't have another attack. And I understand that we can't prevent every single dog attack and every single bite that's going to happen. But when we have situations like the example I give you right under our nose, there are steps that we can do to prevent that from happening again. Now, as far as Riverwalk's safety, you know, like I said, I've run many, many, many times on that Riverwalk, and the only problem I've had is dogs being, you know, being chased by dogs. You know, fortunately, never, nothing's ever happened from it, but I think by enforcing these, I will help make the Riverwalk safer. And, you know, safety in numbers, obviously never go out on that, you know, on that path alone and carrying pepper spray everybody in there, and just more police presence in general, especially near the houses that back up to the Riverwalk, because that seems to be where the houses, those, those houses have the dogs that tend to get loose. So if the police can even patrol maybe more like on Elizabeth Street where the Riverwalk is, and, you know, just, just small things like that, you know, I think would really, really help prevent something that happened last week happening again. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. The next speaker is Jason UptheGrove. I don't see him here, so we'll move on. Communicate, I'm sorry, consent calendar.
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I move that items B and C on the consent calendar be received and filed, and that item A be received, filed, and approved.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file items B and C, and to receive, file, and approve item A. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number one be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to amend Section 1420.071 of the codified ordinance.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that communication number two be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number three.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Beaver Excavating Company.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that communication number three be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number four.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to enter into agreements for the restroom at Cook Park.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number four be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number five.
From the Director of Human Resources regarding legislation for the city wellness program.
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I move that communication number five be received and filed, and referred to the HR Committee.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number five, and to refer it to the Human Resources Committee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number six.
From the City Engineer requesting legislation to amend the contract of Mullen Camp Building Corporation.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that communication number six be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the City Engineer regarding legislation to execute an LPA agreement with ODOT for the Wayne High Project.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that communication number seven be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number eight.
From the City Engineer requesting legislation to dispose of surplus through GovDeals.com.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that communication number eight be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number nine.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to enter into a contract with EMH &amp; T Inc.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that communication number nine be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 10.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Brenneman Excavating.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that communication number 10 be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 10. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 11.
From the Deputy Director of Parks requesting legislation to receive a donation from Wright Mulch Company.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that communication number 11 be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 11. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I would like to thank the Wright Mulch Company for this donation to the city. We talked about this when we were doing the area cleanup around our park downtown here and looking for mulch, and I think this will be an asset for the city, and I do appreciate it. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Next on the agenda, reports of officials. Sheriff Sam Krish and Chief Kevin Martin.
Mr. President, members of council, Sheriff Krish and I would like to take this opportunity to update you on the enforcement activity accomplished by the West Central Ohio Crime Task Force in 2012. The accomplishments of the task force in 2012 were achieved through the combined efforts of investigators from the Allen County Sheriff's Office, the Van Wirt County Sheriff's Office, the Delphus Police Department, the Shawnee Township Police Department, and of course the Lima Police Department. The task force conducted investigations throughout Allen, Van Wirt, and Pauling Counties. In all, task force personnel investigated 631 drug cases last year and served 86 search warrants at various locations. Of the 631 cases, 401 of those, or 64 percent of the investigations, were conducted within the city of Lima. Of the 86 search warrants, 55, or again, 64 percent of the search warrants, were served at locations within the city. This means that nearly two-thirds of the investigative activity just mentioned occurred within the city of Lima last year. Task force members were responsible for getting 56 illegal firearms off the street of our community. Their investigations resulted in more than $65,000 being seized from suspected illegal drug operations. This was in addition to the various amounts of heroin, cocaine, marijuana, prescription medications, K-2, and bath salts that were also seized as a result of their dedication and hard work. The task force personnel also worked closely with the various, with various other organizations such as the FBI's Violent Crimes Against Children Task Force, the US Marshal Service, and Allen County Children Services. The task force members continue working diligently. Already, just through the first three months of this year, they have been responsible for serving 28 search warrants. Of those 28 search warrants, 23 of them, or 82 percent, have been served within the city of Lima. It is hoped that by sharing this information, it will bring about a greater appreciation for the excellent work being accomplished by those personnel that have been assigned to the West Central Ohio Crime Task Force. Even more importantly, though, it is hoped that this information will encourage everyone within our community to come forward with information relating to possible criminal activity occurring within their respective neighborhoods. Now, at this time, I would like to turn the podium over to Sheriff Krish.
Thank you. I appreciate being here this evening. I just got a few comments that I'd like to make. One, I brought some maps. We can do this at the end, city council, but what I've done is put on two different maps of all the search warrants that we serve in the entire county and the city, as well of all, all the drug buys that we've made throughout the entire county and the city. So I'll stick around after city council if you'd like to take a look at them. The other thing I'd just like to say that, you know, it's, it's a pleasure working with Lima Police Department and all the other law enforcement agencies, and we all have the same goal, is to make our community safe, whether it's in the city, the county, but, you know, truly working together definitely is, is a positive thing. I think if you look back just in the last few years, it even gets better as time goes. So not only with the West Central Ohio Crime Task Force working together, but I've met with Chief Barton on several occasions and other events that we do throughout the community working together. Again, our, our goal is to make it as safe as we can in our community, bring people in our community and take care of them. So looking forward to, to continue working with Lima Police Department and the other agencies, again, to better our community. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no committee reports this evening. Resolution 413.
This is the second reading of resolution supporting the request for financial assistance for modifications of the CF and E rail crossing at Cable Road in Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that resolution number 413 be adopted on its second reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to adopt resolution 413 on its second reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nieper.
No.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Resolution 413 has passed on its second, I'm sorry, has been adopted on its second reading by a seven to one vote. Resolution 513.
A resolution supporting the expansion of Medicaid in Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Teppin.
I move that resolution 513 be adopted on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to adopt resolution 513 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nieper.
No.
Mr. McLean.
No.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Resolution 513 has been adopted on its first reading by a six to two vote. Ordinance 7513.
Leaving special assessments for property maintenance co-charges on premises in the city of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 7513 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 7513 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Order 7513 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Order 7613.
Granting conditions for a fair ink to hold square fair 2013 in the town square.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that ordinance 76-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 7613 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Order 7613 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 7713.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Brenneman Excavating, Inc.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean. I'm sorry, Mr. Nieper.
I move that ordinance number 7713 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 7713 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I had an earlier discussion with Mr. Elstro concerning the map that was attached to the communication on the repair. And I was wondering, at a later point, when the project will start, if there's a schedule of where, you know, and the progression of this. I know, I called because I noticed, you know, one was noted in the fifth ward, and, which I'm pleased to see, but I got to thinking after we spoke about a schedule that he could share at a later time.
Okay. Are you expecting them, him to just let us know what the schedule is going to be?
Well...
Okay. Mr. Elstro.
We do have completion dates for projects, and this one will be completed around late October. We leave it to the contractors primarily to set their own construction schedule, file with us. Once we get that information from the contractor, we will make a public release of the schedule.
But you're hoping that all 12 of these repairs will be done by October?
Yes.
That's the main point.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Order 7713 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 7813.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with EMH &amp; T, Inc.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that ordinance number 7813 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 7813 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?[1622.11]
I move that ordinance number 7813 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 7813 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Neper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance 7813 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 7913.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Beaver Excavating Company.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neper.
I move that ordinance number 7913 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 7913 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe?
At this time, could Mr. Elstro give us an approximate time for this project to start?
Mr. Elstro?
Mr. President, counsel. What you are proving tonight makes available to us to proceed with the engineering work, which is about $160,000. The full funding for this project is not in place yet, and the full anticipated cost is 2.2 million. So those of you who are familiar with these types of projects, it takes years for us to move this towards construction. At this point in time, there is no construction calendar set for this project. We will work through the engineering portion first, and then that will give us a better idea of how long it will take to amass the funds, which will be, which will need to be required to be in federal and state form before the actual construction of this phase goes forward. Does that help you? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elstro. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Neper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance 8013 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 8113.
Amending ordinance 1912.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neper.
I move that ordinance 8113 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 8113 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I had an earlier discussion with Mr. Elstro concerning the map that was attached to the communication on the repair. And I was wondering, at a later point, when the project will start, if there's a schedule of where, you know, and the progression of this. I know, I called because I noticed, you know, one was noted in the fifth ward, and, which I'm pleased to see. But I got to thinking after we spoke about a schedule that he could share at a later time.
Okay. Are you expecting him to just let us know what the schedule is going to be?
Well, or...
Okay. Mr. Elstro.
We do have completion dates for projects, and this one will be completed around late October. We leave it to the contractors primarily to set their own construction schedule, file with us. Once we get that information from the contractor, we will make a public release of the schedule.
But you're hoping that all 12 of these repairs will be done by October?
Yes.
That's the main point.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Adams, is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Neper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance 7713 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 7813.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with EMH and T Inc.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neper.
I move that ordinance number 7813 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 7813 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Neper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance 7813 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 7913.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Beaver Excavating Company.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neper.
I move that ordinance number 7913 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 7913 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Neper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance 7813 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 7813.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with EMH and T Inc.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neper.
I move that ordinance number 7813 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 7813 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Neper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance 7813 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 7913.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Beaver Excavating Company.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neper.
I move that ordinance number 7913 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 7913 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Neper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance 7813 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 8013.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a local public agency agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation to enable the city to accept, expend, administer, and draw down funds for the All Lima Wayne High Street Project.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neper.
I move that ordinance number 8013 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 8013 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe?
At this time, could Mr. Elstro give us an approximate time for this project to start?
Mr. Elstro?
Mr. President, counsel. What you are proving tonight makes available to us to proceed with the engineering work, which is about $160,000. The full funding for this project is not in place yet, and the full anticipated cost is 2.2 million. So those of you who are familiar with these types of projects, it takes years for us to move this towards construction. At this point in time, there is no construction calendar set for this project. We will work through the engineering portion first, and then that will give us a better idea of how long it will take to amass the funds, which will be, which will need to be required to be in federal and state form before the actual construction of this phase goes forward. Does that help you? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elstro. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Neper?
No.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance 7813 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 7913.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with GovDeals.com to auction unneeded city surplus.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neper.
I move that ordinance 8213 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 8213 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Neper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance 7813 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 8013.
Amending section 1806.16 of the codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 8013 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 8013 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
This subject of junk autos is still in committee, but at the last meeting, the committee approved this update of this ordinance section to become more in line with the state of Ohio's revised code. And, but the subject is still in committee, and because I had not had a report this evening from that committee meeting, I wanted to explain that this came out of our committee with its approval to support the minor changes that were made. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Neper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance 8513 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Miscellaneous business. Ms. Townsend?
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee, or the communication, I referred to the HR committee. I'd like for that committee to meet next Monday, 4/29/13 at 5:30.
Okay.
And I'm not sure that, when we are partnering with the Allen County Humane Society regarding the feral cat issue, an announcement came out from their director, Michael Lay, today regarding a TNR trap neuter release meeting. And I believe that's next Saturday, the 27th, from 1:00 to 3:00, and it's at the Allen County Humane Society facility. So neighborhood people who are interested in that, or other counselors interested in that program and how it works, are welcome to come there. Again, it's from 1:00 to 3:00 Saturday at the Allen County Humane Society. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Mr. Neper?
Nothing this evening.
Mr. McLean?
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, on that day, the 27th, is the Ottawa River cleanup. If you haven't got all your volunteer hours put in, fall down and get yourself set up to go help clean up the Ottawa River. Also, on May 4th, the Northside Neighborhood Association is going to have a Meet Your Neighbor brunch. That's at May 4th at Northland Lanes from 9:00 a.m. till noon. Basically, we're going to have the chief of police, the sheriff, and the mayor there. You can ask questions and get to know your neighborhood. That would consist of the Third, First, and Second Ward. They will have some donuts and coffee and things like that, so come out and meet your neighbors. Citywide Pride, the Northside Neighborhood Association will have a dumpster located at St. Draper on the 11th, which is the second weekend of the month of May. Citywide Pride's coming up, so everybody start collecting their disposables to get ready to go out. We will not take some items like tires and batteries and things like that, but anything else that you have, get it ready because we're going to clean up our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Mr. Lowe?
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, on June 1st, Eastside Neighborhood Association will also do the City Pride cleanup that will be held at Forest Park in the northwest parking lot in the backside of the church. That's located at 315 Collins Avenue. And on May 14th, Eastside Neighborhood Association will also have a meet and greet at the Lincoln Park Shelter House at 6:00 p.m. If raining, we will meet at Forest Park Church. There will be pizza and pop surge, and this is also a meet and greet neighbor's event. So we like minds, good minds think alike here. I wanted to make a couple comments. Since last council, there's been many opinions stated in our local newspaper about the billboards and signage. My stand on this is, as a counselor, when constituents come and ask us why individuals are allowed to do certain things, it's my job to find out why. And that's what I did. Those that have made comments and continue to make comments, I invite you to our committee meetings. And I'm going to leave it at that. Make sure you get all the information, I guess, is the bottom line before you make comments. And I know how it might have been perceived as being read in the paper, but again, my job is to find out when and why, and how come certain things happen in Third Ward. So if you're mad at me for doing my job, then go ahead and continue to be upset. The one thing that I would also like to do is, I want to personally give an award for information on who's responsible for tagging, and when I say tagging, graffitiing in the city of Lima, and their logo is Wrench. It's W-R-E-N-C-H. I'm not going to tell you the amount of money, because you'll just do it for the amount of money. I want individuals to do it for the right thing. I need to know who this person is, because it's everywhere. And they've taken it to the point where they even tagged the New Vine Underpass. And it's shameful that we got individuals working to beautify the city, and we got people that want to deface it. And I know it's heavy in the Third Ward, and I've actually been riding around trying to see if I can hit him up, but he never goes back to the same spot. He's constantly hitting new places, and he loves dumpsters. But I'm personally going to give a war for the information of the individual that's doing that. The second thing that I would, well, the third or fourth thing I'd like to address is, for the second time, I'm requesting this. At Jackson Street and Market, there are no signs denying right turns going north and south. This is on Jackson Street. It's a safety concern for our Lima senior students that cross that street. East and west Market has signage, but Jackson doesn't going north and south. It needs to be done. It needs to be done. One of the ladies in the Kraus-Dewitt Center says she hears brakes all the time, and it's because of kids crossing there, and people don't pay attention. So I'm asking again, we need to get some signage up there. And I would like to make a motion to refer to the Traffic Commission.
Second.
Second.
The motion in the second is to refer the issue to the Traffic Commission. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Mr. Teppin?
Yes, I would like to refer the issue of Riverwalk safety and dog ordinances to the Safety Services Committee.
Second.
The motion in the second is to refer the issue of dog ordinances and the Riverwalk safety to the Safety Services Committee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
And Sally, if you would, when a meeting is scheduled, if you would notify Karen Bacon that she'd like to attend. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teppin. Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. President.
You guys switch seats.
I'd like to make a motion to refer for review the subject of professional services as it relates to the purchasing policy to the Finance Committee.
Second.
The motion in the second is to refer the issue of professional service contracts as it relates to the purchasing policy to the Finance Committee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
Then I would like to make a motion for the clerk to prepare a proclamation honoring the life of Mr. John Rudolph, who recently passed away.
Second.
Proclamation, resolution, resolution.
Sorry.
The motion in the second is to authorize a resolution memorializing Mr. John Rudolph. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
Midway East will be also participating in Citywide Pride. They'll have a dumpster on May 18th. It'll be at a new location at the former King's Corner Lot at Heine and Elm, now owned by Meat City. Lunch will follow at the center at 1:00 p.m. at 720 East Kibbie Street. But it's going to be at a new location at Pine and Elm from 9:00 to 12:00. Hope Neighborhood Association will have a dumpster also on May 18th at Unity Elementary School for that area of the 5th Ward, and I guess I'll be splitting my time between the two. I'd like to mention, and for the committee, the Community Development, Economic Community Development Committee, to make note of those dates of the consolidated plan update. I'll just mention tonight that the first one is May 6th at 5:00 p.m. in Council Chambers. It's a community meeting to review the caser resources and pick up forms for requests for proposals. They'll do a review of the past year, an update, and going forward. And this will be for the city staff will review the C D B G and home accomplishments, and we'll see what dollars we have available from the state and federal government. So please make a note of that on May 6th at 5:00 p.m. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Glenn?
Yes, I got a couple things. May 29th, we will be having that Safety Service meeting with the Riverwalk. You guys okay? April 29th, committee, 5:30?
No.
No.
She's 5:30.
I was 6:30. It's good.
Done, yeah.
It's good. Okay, 6:30, May 29th, we'll be discussing about the Riverwalks.
April 29th?
April, I'm sorry. April 29th. April 29th at 6:30. That's Monday, April the 29th. 6:30. I won't make a mistake, but one time. Okay? Everybody got that?
Yep.
All right. May 4th, we will be cleaning up the 6th Ward there. We will have a dumpster at Forest Street Missionary Church, and lunch will be provided. We have someone who will be getting some tires. So if you bring the tires, I talked to a guy. He will be taking the tires, and somewhere he'll go sell them somewhere, I don't know. But he called me up to say, I'll take the tires. They'd want to get rid of them. We got a lot of work around there. Been around a lot of areas there, and it's a lot of things around there to get done. I appreciate all the neighbors on Holly Street and Widow Street. We all came together and got that done before we had to call code enforcement out. The neighbors got together and took care of business, and I appreciate all that. And getting everything cleaned up, and had an opportunity to go back around there last night. It was all done. And that's why I want to say, when we have a problem, let's try to take care of it before I make phone calls on it. And that's what we did, and we're going to continue going at that pace of taking care of problems that we need to take care of. Wednesday, April 24th, Coleman will be having a professional service breakfast from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. at Coleman Behavior. Also, I've been doing a lot with youth, and I'm really glad that Judge Glenn Derryberry is having a meeting there on Wednesday, 24th, at 12:00 noon, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon at the old Y M C A there, Y M C A Annex. We're going to be talking about how we're going to work on keeping, getting things for the youth to do, and keeping them off the street, and making them have fun, keep them busy. So the Juvenile Court is sponsoring this. It's a community faith-based summit for youth engagement. So we're going to try to put some things together and make sure that we've got more opportunity for the kids to do this summer, from swimming, playing softball, baseball, but we will have a lot of activities for them to do. Also, we got a young lady from Lima Senior, and she live on St. John Street. She got a career in law enforcement. And I was very excited by when she sent me a letter. Hall Northern gave her an opportunity to go to Stanford, University of Stanford, University there for a law and trial conference in California. And she's trying to work very hard to get the funding to go. And her goal is to be in law enforcement. And she had heard a lot about, we were talking about different things about minorities getting in law enforcement, but she always wanted to be in law enforcement. She's in 11th grade right now. And she's been working on a program called the Street Law Program at the school she attend there. But we want to work with her and help her out there. She's been doing really good getting her funding together, and her future lay that she want to come back here to Lima and be a police officer, and that excites me so much. Also, we want to make sure that we make some, I've been getting around, and I know she brought up about the Riverwalk. And we do have, I went around Elizabeth Street, and there's a couple dogs around there, and a couple of them pretty big. And I mean, right now, I had talked to the neighbors over there about the dog, because the Riverwalk is a beautiful place. And I don't want to see no one miss that, walking around the Riverwalk. That's a good opportunity for everybody to get their exercise and everything. So we recapped the meeting, the 29th, and I know our Safety Service Committee will and other councils will try to work very hard in trying to put things in place that we can make that place a safe place for everyone. And I know we got some little, they have a lot of dog problems around the whole 6th Ward there. So this is not new, that we've been dealing with all, you know, from over on Jameson Street, Stage Street. I know people have been calling about, they call everything vicious dog. But we will be working on some of them problems there, and that's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. I don't have anything this evening. Mr. Teppin?
Mr. President, I move that Lima City Council adjourn into executive session for purposes of collective bargaining issues.
Second.
The motion in the second is to adjourn into executive session for the purposes of discussing collective bargaining issues, personnel issues. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Neper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Teppin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Okay. We'll meet in 15 minutes. That'll give time for anybody who has questions on Sheriff Chris's maps, Chief Martin's maps. I know that I'm not going to tie them up while we sit through executive session, so we'll meet in 15 minutes. Counsel is adjourned.